Good evening Farmington Hills, welcome to the regular city council meeting of March 22nd, 2021. It's 7:30 PM, we will now begin our meeting. If you would like to view this on cable television, it's Spectrum Channel 203 and AT&amp;T Channel 99. For YouTube, please go to youtube.com backslash user backslash FH Channel 8. And for your Zoom webinar link, it is zoom.us backslash J backslash 992-954-04382. And for the dial number, it is 1-312-626-6799. And the webinar ID, just like it is for Zoom, is 992-954-04382. And you can also view us on FHgov.com. We will have a public comments section. And to join in, I will just ask you to raise your hand when we come to that part of the agenda, and you will be called on to speak. We will now have the roll call of the... We now set the regular session in order, and we will begin with the pledge of allegiance. So I'm hoping Carly will give us our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of the states, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And next item on the agenda is the roll call. Will you please state your name and the city and state in which you are calling in from to attend this meeting?
Mayor Barnett.
Vicky Barnett, Mayor, Farmington Hills, Michigan.
Mayor Proton Bolowar.
Jackie Bolowar, Farmington Hills, Michigan.
Councilmember Bridges.
Michael Bridges, Farmington Hills, Michigan.
Councilmember Noel.
Valerie Noel, Farmington Hills, Michigan.
Councilmember Massey.
And Massey, Farmington Hills, Michigan.
Councilmember Newland.
Mary Newland, Farmington Hills, Michigan.
And Councilmember Strickfaden.
Matthew Strickfaden, Farmington Hills, Michigan.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the approval of the regular session meeting agenda. Are there... Is there a motion to approve the agenda? It's been moved by... Go ahead, Mr. Bridges.
I move that council will approve the agenda as published.
Okay, and Dr. Massey, you're seconding it. Okay, so it's been moved by Mr. Bridges, seconded by Dr. Massey. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, this is a roll call. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Strickfaden.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Bridges.
Yes.
Bolowar.
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett.
Yes. Next item, it's great to see those young faces that are just up there. Presentation from North Farmington High School Red Cross Club regarding vaccine awareness campaign. Okay, so which one of you folks is gonna take this on for us?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Thanks.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you too.
Okay, awesome.
Um, is it okay if I start sharing?
Sure.
Good evening, city council members and viewers. Before we start, I would like to thank the Farmington City Council for giving us this wonderful opportunity. It's a great honor for our club to be presenting at this town hall meeting, especially under current circumstances. For introductions, my name is Taysha, and I'm a freshman at North Farmington High School. I serve as the president and founder for the North Farmington American Red Cross Club. With me tonight, I have another board member, Ashna.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ashna. I am the secretary at the North Farmington Red Cross Club. Like Taysha, I am a freshman, and I'm extremely excited to share our informational presentation with you today.
Thank you, Ashna. Now, I want everyone to take a moment and imagine a time when COVID was nonexistent. That's how it was about a year ago, before the first case of COVID-19 hit Michigan. Over this past year, we've been through so much, fighting together, and now we finally have the most effective solution to end this pandemic, the vaccine. Before we dive into how the COVID-19 vaccine works, it's important to understand the types of immunity. Immunity can be classified into passive and active immunity. Passive immunity is when an individual receives antibodies from another person or animal. An example of passive immunity is when a mother transfers antibodies to her fetus. Antibodies are basically proteins produced in response to a bacteria or a virus. We'll be getting more into antibodies in the next couple of slides. Active immunity is when an individual makes antibodies within their own body, and an example is a vaccine.
So who can receive the COVID-19 vaccine? Well, according to the CDC, frontline workers such as doctors and nurses and those who are above the age of 75 are prioritized to get the vaccine first. Those who have underlying medical conditions, essential workers like teachers, for example, or individuals above the age of 65 are next in line to get the vaccine. These people are prioritized to get the vaccine. How many doses of the COVID-19 vaccine do you need to receive? Well, this varies by company. For some companies, you will need to receive two doses over a certain period of time for full immunity. However, for certain companies, they only require one dose for full immunity. Most hospitals and clinics are striving to provide all individuals with the COVID-19 vaccine, and it should be noted booster doses may be required.
So there are many reasons to get vaccinated, but these are the reasons that we feel are the most important. The first one is to protect yourself. By receiving the vaccine, you are not only... Sorry, the first one is to protect yourself. By receiving the vaccine, your body will build up the ability to fight off COVID-19. These vaccines are definitely safe and effective, and have been proven by multiple clinical trials conducted across the world. By receiving the vaccine, you are not only protecting yourself, but those who are around you, who may be more susceptible to COVID-19, for example, the elderly and individuals with underlying medical conditions. So how does the COVID-19 vaccine protect you? First, we need to understand RNA. RNA stands for ribonucleic acid. This is a molecule that is vital for communication between DNA and protein-making factories. RNA vaccines are the most common form of COVID-19 vaccines as of now. Messenger RNA is a type of RNA. When the mRNA vaccine is injected into your body, your body reacts to the vaccine's proteins. These harmless proteins, called spike proteins, are then collected and displayed on the surface of a dendric cell. This is a signal that triggers immune cells, such as B cells, to create antibodies, which again are proteins produced in response to a specific pathogen. A pathogens are basically bacteria, virus, fungi, et cetera. So when the pathogen reenters the body at a later time, these antibodies help us fight the pathogen.
Clinical trials. Clinical trials are the primary way that researchers and scientists find out if new treatments, vaccines, et cetera, are safe and effective for the public. For the COVID-19 vaccine, developers have issued a joint pledge, or basically an agreement, not to seek government assistance for their vaccines until they've been proven to be safe and effective. The process, well, the first process would be multi-stage testing, which involves tens of thousands of people with differing risks for COVID-19. This excludes children under 16 and pregnant and breastfeeding women, but again, this can vary by the company. Then there's a panel of experts that analyze the results from the trials, including evidence on disease, age, groups affected, risk factors, et cetera. Finally, officials in each individual country will then decide whether to approve the vaccine for national use. Community safety. The most important reason to get vaccinated is not only to protect yourself, but also your loved ones and your community. The first dose of COVID-19 vaccine was administered in Michigan on December 14th. Since December 14th, the incidence rate of COVID-19 vaccines has tremendously decreased. As you can see on the graph, there's a steady decline after December 14th in a number of cases. Vaccination is only one reason COVID-19 has decreased, however, and it is extremely important to continue adhering to CDC guidelines, such as mask use, six feet distancing, and hand hygiene.
The safest way to access the vaccine is by contacting your primary care doctor, local pharmacies and grocery stores, local health department, or your state health department. Make sure to check your county or city's website for any forms or documents you may need at the time of your vaccine appointment. Be sure to contact your vaccine chosen provider if you have any questions.
The administration and the side effects of the vaccine. If you have underlying medical conditions or you have allergies, it is heavily advised that you consult with your doctor first. As for the administration of the vaccine, a certified individual will insert the vaccine needle into your upper arm, similar to most vaccines. You will then be under observation lasting about 15 to 30 minutes for any rare side effects. It is noted that certain individuals will experience some mild side effects, such as swelling at the injection site, a headache, chills, muscle pains, nausea, et cetera. But again, this is a small number of individuals, and it only lasts for a certain short period of time.
At this time, I would like to thank our club members who volunteer their time to put together this presentation. On behalf of the North Farmington American Red Cross Club, I would like to specially thank Madam Mayor for giving us this opportunity. I would also like to thank Ms. Smith and Ms. Pines from the city of Farmington Hills for all your help and effort. Thank you, Ms. Moonford and Ms. Reed Smith from the American Red Cross for all your support and guidance. Last but not least, I want to thank our advisor, Mr. McNeff, and our principal, Mr. Green. Without this team, this wouldn't have been possible.
This leads us to the end of our presentation. We hope you learned about the vaccine, how it works, how to access it, who gets it, and in general, how to keep your community safe while you wait for your vaccine. We thank you for your time today and hope you gain more knowledge about the vaccine. Any questions?
Does anybody on council have any questions?
No.
Okay, I do want to say that the presentation was excellent. You guys are to be commended, and and thank you for all your time and energy in putting this together and presenting it to our city council. Also, you are real examples of why our public schools are rated an A across the state, and we're very grateful for you getting involved in your community and for supporting us with your knowledge and the club that you've created. Does anybody else have anything they want to add?
Just wanted to echo your comments, Mayor, that that's a tremendous presentation by the two students, and we appreciate you informing us of all the regarding the vaccine and COVID-19. It was a great presentation. Thank you for your time.
And when you work on something else in the future that you would like to present, please get in touch with us. We'd like to provide you that forum to help educate our citizens. And again, thank you very much. Dr. Massey, you wanted to add something?
Oh, yes, please. I'd love to add something. First of all, as a fellow Raider, I am really, really pleased to see you guys do this. This is great. I would, a couple little, just a couple of suggestions that I think that you hit on, but the two items, number one is that mRNA vaccines, a lot of people think that they're brand new and experimental, and you guys, I think, did a great job explaining that, but also that they've been around for nearly 30 years. We just haven't used them previously. And, you know, that would be the only thing I suggest with that, but great job. And like, I really enjoyed hearing that, and keep up the great work.
And as an aside, Dr. Massey did work for pharmaceutical companies helping to create vaccines and other drugs. So if you want to pick his brain, go right ahead. I'm sure he...
Feel free. Anytime. Get in touch with me.
Love to. On how you put studies together and all of those things. Mayor Proton Bolowar, you wanted to say something?
Oh.
I think... Okay, good. You're unfroze.
He did an outstanding jab. Really wonderful. I know it's so poised in the delivery. The delivery was really great. The information was great. And as a person who has experienced tragedy in my family from COVID-19, I appreciate their effort in getting the word out about how the vaccines work and how they are so important to our community if we are to combat this disease and get back to some sort of normalcy. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Excellent job.
Anyone else with comments or questions? Okay, Raiders.
I'll go to comments. Excellent public speakers.
Yeah, that was great. We loved it. So again, keep us in mind when you put together another presentation on something that will help our residents stay safe and healthy, and thank your Red Cross advisors on this on our behalf. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, well, you guys were great. We will now move on to the presentation of reaccreditation through the American Public Works Association.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Odell. I'm the Region 5 Director and National Board Member of the American Public Works Association, calling from Chicago, Illinois. But don't worry, I've got Michigan ties. I've got family in Southfield, Novi, and Royal Oak. So I know the area. I'm very excited to hear about the great things that the city of Farmington Hills in Michigan are doing. And congratulations on your reaccreditation. Accreditation is marked a professionalism in our public works field that shows that a village has, or city has made the commitment to continuous improvement in the delivery of public works, operations, and services. And the city's been doing a great job of that. And the accreditation really recognizes the policies, procedures, and practices which have been evaluated by the very top public works professionals in the nation. And the city has lived up to all those, all those levels. Ultimately, Farmington Hill staff is engaged with APWA on the local, state, and national level. And the city continues to be recognized nationally for their great snow and ice operations. So kudos there as well. In fact, they won the Excellence in Snow and Ice Award back in 2011 nationally. So that's a very, very nice award. But staff is really well recognized, and they're called upon regularly to give presentations, both statewide but also nationally, on various topics. Most notably, Brian Pickworth serves on the National Winter Maintenance Committee, and also your director, Karen, is also on the National Diversity Committee, which is a very important committee to near dear our hearts. She was the chair back in 2017. Also, a couple things of note is the purchasing staff along with DPW has a really good competitive bidding process that we really enjoy watching with very good purchasing power that we've seen really, really good bids on. But the thing that was really the most endeared, near dear to my heart, was all the great outreach events. Obviously, during the COVID year, I don't know if you guys saw a difference, but before that, there was over 20 outreach events per year, including tow a truck, paint a plow, career quest, lunch with a truck, and there was even more. So it's just amazing what you guys are doing, the great public outreach, just because we all know how important public services, clean drinking water, clean streets are. So kudos there. And ultimately, at our February virtual visit, which was virtual this year, we reviewed over 153 different practices that your city does. So kudos there. So with that, I'd like to officially congratulate the Public Services Department of the city of Farmington Hills for their reaccreditation. You're one of only three in the state, I believe. So that's just really, really a great accomplishment. So on behalf of Stephen Miller, who's along with me from the American Public Works Association, thank you, Steve, for your time. But ultimately, Karen and Kevin, Public Services Department, congratulations. So the floor is yours. Thank you so much, and congrats.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Okay, Karen, do you want... And Kevin, do you want to add anything?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the entire Public Services Department, I want to thank Stephen Miller from APWA and his accreditation team for their assistance as we navigated through the reaccreditation process. From a practical standpoint, reaccreditation means that our department has a documented policy and procedure for the work that we do. And I also want to thank city council and the city manager's office for their continued support of public services. It's with this support that we can provide service, service-level excellence to our residents and visitors of the city with a high degree of professionalism and commitment to continuous improvement. I also want to recognize the city staff that were involved in the reaccreditation process. So as I call on your names, if you could simply raise your hand and be recognized. DPW Superintendent Kevin McCarthy. City Engineer Jim Kubera. You guys know what Jim looks like. DPS Secretary Barbara Smirtka. Thank you, Barb. Senior Engineer Tammy Gushard. Yep, oh, there's Jim. Hi, Jim. There we go. And of course, City Manager Gary Meckchen also assisted with a couple of the practices. So thank you again, Gary. And another staff member who couldn't be with us tonight, Anne Marie Waker, who is the secretary at the DPW. So thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm still not used to Jim Kabea without his mustache. I'm just not. It's just still weird to me. So thank you all. Mr. Meckchen, did you want to add anything since you came from this department?
I would. Great job, team. You guys did a wonderful time, a wonderful job. And it was a heavy lift, and great job in getting the reaccreditation. That was fantastic. Way to carry on the tradition. Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a proclamation recognizing March 21st through the 27th, 2021, as Severe Weather Awareness Week. Mr. Bridges, would you like to read that proclamation?
Yes, I would, Madam Mayor. Proclamation recognizing severe weather awareness week, March 21st to March 27th. Whereas Governor Gretchen Whitner and Oakland County Executive David Coulter have declared the week of March 21st through March 27th, 2021, as Severe Weather Awareness Week in Michigan. Whereas the Oakland County Homeland Security Division will be engaged in various public education efforts during severe weather awareness, a week to help minimize the loss of life and destruction of property that can result from severe weather. And whereas to further raise the awareness level of severe weather safety and to promote tornado safety preparedness, Oakland County will conduct a special test of its outdoor warning system sirens on Wednesday, March 24, 2021, at 1:00 PM. Now, there will be a resolve that Vicky Barnett, the mayor of the city of Farmington Hills, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim March 21st through March 27, 2021, as Severe Weather Awareness Week in Farmington Hills, and encourage all residents, schools, and businesses to test their severe weather action plans to ensure safety of everyone in our community.
Thank you. And we have somebody accepting this award. Is that Mr. Newfeld?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Barnett. I'm Jamie Newfeld. Also, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, appreciate your support. I do have a few remarks if you have a moment. I just want to let you know that the city is very well-prepared for emergencies, natural and/or man-made. Emergency management team, which is represented by each city department, we plan, we practice, and we exercise for emergencies. Do that year-round. This week, obviously, we're emphasizing severe weather, and which is the costliest and deadliest, most prevalent hazard out there. Severe thunderstorms, hail, high winds, lightning, flooding, tornadoes, heat, cold drought, we face all of them, and we've seen all of them. Everyone here has. This week, tornadoes and thunderstorms and flooding are the focus. There's a statewide tornado drill that will be conducted Wednesday, March 24th, at 1:00. The city will participate in the drill this year. We have participated for a number of years in these drills, implementing our emergency action plan, and then conducting after-action reviews. And since DPS and DPW are in the spotlight right now, we can talk about how their participation in this drill, and over a number of years, in 2019 especially, led to the local planning team and the city council to approve the purchase and installation of two more outdoor severe weather sirens for the city. One of those is across from the DPW, and the other one is on the east side of Founder Sports Park. Those are very important additions to protect our citizens in the case of severe weather. The city actively promotes outdoor siren testing schedule, as well as the SkyWarn Spotter Curriculum. SkyWarn is a program offered annually by the National Weather Service through Oakland County Emergency Management and Homeland Security, and it instructs people how to identify severe weather and to give the means to report it. And I'm pleased to say that our Emergency Preparedness Commission and our Community Emergency Response Team has numerous train spotters, which enhances our emergency early warning for the citizens. And that's all I have. If there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them, but we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, I want to thank you for all of your help in keeping our citizens safe, not just in weather emergencies, but in health emergencies. And the training that you receive really goes a long way to making sure that our citizens are some of the safest in the state and indeed the country. So kudos to you and your training team, and thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the support.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. Does anybody have any correspondence to report? Okay, then I will bring up, I do receive a letter, and so did Councilmember Bridges from the Holocaust Memorial Center. They would like to apply for a grant through the education funds for schools, and that will be presented to Councilmember, I mean Congresswoman Brenda Lawrence, who serves on the Appropriations Committee, and she is our Congresswoman from here. And she would, we would really appreciate it if council would agree to sign on to the entire letter. I can have Jillian Pines clean up the draft that we were sent and make sure that you all see it and just give us your okay. We don't have all of your signatures on file, but we would like to mention you by name as supporting this project. And time is of the essence, otherwise I wouldn't be rushing this so fast. But it doesn't cost the city any money at all, and it really puts some dollars into educational programs through our Holocaust Memorial Center. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Joppik, do I need to... Oh, Dr. Massey.
Oh, Madam Mayor, I think this is a great idea, and I would make a motion that we, that you go forward with talking with Ms. Pines and preparing said letter.
I would support that, there.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Mr. Bridges, that we go ahead, have the letter drafted and circulate to all members of council, so that we can send it on to Congresswoman Lawrence as quickly as possible. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Newland?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Bolowar?
Yes.
Strickfaden?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Okay, thank you all. There were a few other pieces of correspondence I received regarding some zoning issues in two subdivisions that have been passed on to the city manager for follow-up. He's already followed up on two of those complaints, and the third one, we will be able to get to once I actually forward him that letter that I received from somebody on Chiauasi, and I want to thank them for bringing those issues to our attention.
Thank you.
And I also want to thank our permitting department for helping a new resident get a certificate of occupancy on a rush basis last Friday, so that she could be a new neighbor to all of us in Farmington Hills. So thank you all for that work. Anybody else have any correspondence they want to bring to our attention? Okay, then we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda will be read by the Mayor Protem Bolowar, and all items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the items may be removed from the consent agenda for consideration. Ms. Bolowar?
Mayor Protem Bolowar? Yeah. Consent agenda item number nine, recommended approval of settlement and release Recommended approval of settlement and release agreement with the Great Lakes Water Authority. GLWA, that's CMR 3-21-28. Item number 10. Recommended adoption of a resolution authorizing the grant application to the Michigan Department of Transportation Local Bridge Program for the Tuck Road Bridge Replacement. Item number, it's CMR 3-21-29. Item number 11. Recommended approval of award of contract for the Park Hill Boulevard gravel road conversion project to Artesian Contracting LLC in the amount of $1,094,329.50. And that's CMR 3-21-30. Item number 12. Recommended approval of award of contract for the Heritage Hills and Wedgewood Common Subdivision Road Reconstruction Program. Phase 1, Tefolsen Company Incorporated for the Concrete Alternative Alternate B in the amount of $3,407,485. That's CMR 3-21-31. Item number 13. Recommended approval of award of bid for building completion, demolition, and cleanup of 26760 to 26770 Orchard Lake Road to the Adams Group in the amount of $56,912. And that's CMR 3-21-32. Item number 14. Recommended approval of award of contract for DPW sanitary, janitorial services to Veterans Cleaning in the amount of $20,580 with possible extension. And that's CMR 3-21-33. Item number 15. Recommended approval of the City Council Study Session Meeting Minutes of March 8th, 2021. And the final item number 16. Recommended approval of the City Council Regular Session Meeting Minutes of March 8th, 2021.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read by the Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Noel, seconded by Councilmember Massey. This is a roll call vote. Is there any discussion first? Seeing none?
Councilmembers Massey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Boloware?
Yes.
Strick Faden?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Next on the agenda is public questions and comments. Please limit your comments to five minutes or less for any item of city business not on the agenda tonight. Do we have any hands raised?
Mayor Barnett, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, did we get anything from our county commissioners?
We did not.
Okay, then I will officially close the public questions and comments and move on to council member comments and announcements. Does anybody have a comment or announcement they would like to bring up? Doctor, Mr. Bridges?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, just to point a point regarding city cleanup. I know that the City Manager probably will be discussing this in his comments as well, but is there a plan to, in regards to cleaning up our catch basins, our city sidewalks and encouraging residents to clean up because of the winter weather, of course, brings a lot of debris around the city particularly around the catch, East Ditch areas as well as sidewalks. Is there a plan that we have in place that we do annually in regards to some of these issues, commercial parking lots, potholes, etc.? So wanted to ask that question and that basically that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Meckchen, do you want to respond?
Sure, certainly. We do have a seasonal plan for street sweeping and catch basin cleaning. I'm actually going to defer that to Kevin McCarthy or Karen Mandora. They've got a better idea of what that plan looks like in the not-too-distant future here.
Thanks. Thanks, Gary. We have a, we have an annual contract and we've actually been out sweeping with our, our forces already on the major roads. We're a little bit early where it's, all the water is shut off in the yard, outside water to fill the sweepers. But that, that process is beginning now and as soon as the weather for sure breaks, we'll be on it. We're working with the Planning Department and Charmaine Kettler regarding this, and the Beautification Commission do a citywide roadside cleanup in April, April 24th, that's Saturday. We also have, as soon as the snow had melted, we've have at least one crew, if not two crews, doing roadside cleanup daily. And then the catch basin contractor should be starting to clean catch basins. We do a fifth of the catch basins every year in the city. We got thousands of them, so we do about 20% a year. And those are scheduled for next, probably in the next two, three weeks, we should start that. I guess we need to keep in mind that we're marching Michigan and moving into April, there's pretty good chance we're still one more snow.
I agree.
We have our equipment, it's all still set up as a winter maintenance equipment and not spring and summer maintenance. So that'll start happening here through April and then we'll transition into the cleanup phase.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, anybody, yes, Ms. Newland?
Kevin, if you could further elaborate about these, the planned cleanup on March is on April 24th, you said? For the beautification, what is their plans? What's their, what's their plans to publicize it to the public? Tell us, can you elaborate on it?
That's actually a project and program that's set up through the Beautification Commission. They do it annually and we, we are kind of a supporting, post a supporting role in that. This year, we're going to have all of, what they do is they publish it, they give out t-shirts and they encourage people to adopt pieces of the roadway in the city, whether it's in front of their house or out on a major road in front of their subdivision. DPW then picks up, provide gloves and trash bags and we pick up all the bags at the end of the day. And then we supplement that cleanup with roads, areas of the city that are not scheduled with, have volunteers scheduled and we clean up the rest that day or try to clean up as much as we can in that day with all the DPW forces. So it's a, it's a citywide effort. It started about four years ago with the Beautification Commission and it's growing huge. I think they're up to like 200 volunteers that clean the city.
Wow. Ms. Noel, did you have a question?
No, I can just add to that. Mr. McCarthy did a good job explaining it. I'm the liaison for the Beautification Commission. And indeed, this is an effort that was started by the Beautification Effort. The idea is to encourage subdivisions to come together on that day and clean up their sub, to walk around their streets and pick up trash. And as Mr. McCarthy said, they, our department or the city, the city DPW actually comes by and picks up all of the trash bags that they fill with trash. They give them the gloves and bags. The Beautification Commission supplies t-shirts for those people that volunteer. So it's a, it's a really nice event. We're always looking for even more people to participate. The commission puts it on Facebook. They do a flyer which Charmaine tries to post and we suck volunteers from the committee that also go around and post things in, you know, like when Panera has a public bulletin board and so forth. I don't think as much of this has taken place this year just because of COVID and the committee has been meeting virtually. So we probably haven't publicized it quite as much in the past. Often the newspapers cover it. So I'm letting council members, I'm encouraging you to get the word out too, to your subdivisions. I know we send letters to KOHA, to the subdivisions that are given to us, the contacts for the subdivisions that are given to us through KOHA. We try to reach out to them as well. So we try to get the word out, but anything you can do to help publicize it would be great because the more volunteers that we can get cleaning up their own neighborhoods, you know, the more attractive that, that they'll look and more enjoyable and adds to the quality of life here in Farmington Hills.
No doubt about it. Thank you.
I have to agree, there's got to be lots of cleanup. I'm trying to put six, seven miles under my feet every night. And I travel Merriman eight mile lot, commercial properties and the amount of trash on the sidewalks is incredible. I mean, I probably can count at least 40 disposal masses I make my way along the streets. So, yeah, so we could definitely use some help out there.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, everyone knows it's March is reading month. I encourage you to check your emails. I had just an idea that council could get together and do kind of like a cute video that would be supportive of the committee. Our topic would be committee. We could do read a book to our youth and could use by our public schools. So think about it, maybe enjoy me.
Okay, great. Anyone else? Okay, that moves us on to the City Manager update.
Sorry.
Maybe weren't talking to us anymore.
Still get caught off guard sometimes. Just a couple of things this evening, just a reminder that yard waste collection starts the week of April 12th. So please refer to the city's website for any yard waste disposal questions you may have and our, and our yard waste disposal guidelines. And in case you didn't hear it earlier in the agenda, it said that people, I understand you have to hear something three times to remember it. Emergency siren testing will occur on Wednesday, March 24th at 1:00 PM. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, next is the public hearing, a public hearing and consideration of adoption of a resolution to vacate a public alley along 30250 Grand River Avenue adjacent to the north lot line of lots 1 through 13 in the BH Works Aviation Subdivision in Section 35, subject to a full width utility easement being retained over the vacated area, CMR 3-21-26. So who takes this one on?
I will.
Okay.
I'm Tammy Gushard, I'm with the Department of Public Services. So good evening, Mayor Barnett and City Council members. The city received a request from the property owner of 30250 Grand River Avenue to vacate an existing 20-foot wide public alleyway, which is located on their property. And I'll go ahead and share my screen here. And hopefully everybody can see the, the map there. So this alleyway is located down in Section 35 of the city. It's on the north side of Grand River along the east side of Tuck. And for those of you that are familiar, this is the Target Complex here, just to the east. And this is the parcel that used to be the Stepping Stone School. So it's this particular parcel here. The property owner that has requested the vacation does currently own all parcels that are abutting this alleyway. So this large parcel here as well as the four smaller parcels that are along the south side of the alley vacation. Prior to a vacation of a public alleyway or street, city code requires that a public hearing is held. And the property owners that are within 300 feet of this proposed alley vacation have been notified, advising them of this public hearing tonight. And in addition to that, as city policy is, we've reached out to multiple agencies that may have interest in this public alleyway and asked for their input on the vacation and we have received responses. And there are no objections to the current alley vacation. So based on our review as well as the input from these multiple agencies, we are recommending the approval of the alley vacation subject to a full width utility easement being retained. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Don't be shy. If you've got any, just state them because I don't have everybody on gallery view. Okay.
Yeah, this is Jackie. Just a quick question. What was the purpose of the alley initially?
So this alleyway here was actually part of the original plat. This area was planted, I think, back in the 1920s and then there was an alleyway that was a part of that plat.
Okay.
This is Mary Dylan. So, I'm sorry. This is not what I really think of an alley. I think of an alley like between two, like between garages, you going down behind the, it'd be between the garages. So it's not really an alley, it's more just an open area. So I'm hoping that the request is because they're going to be proposing something new there because it's been vacant for such a long, long time.
That's our hope as well.
I hope, okay.
Okay, this calls for a public hearing. Since nobody has any further questions, I'm going to open up the public hearing officially. So the public hearing is now open. Does anybody in the public wish to address this? Please keep your comments to under five minutes if you can. Are there, is there anyone with their hand raised?
Mayor Barnett, there are no hands raised.
Okay, since no one wishes to speak at the public hearing, I will now officially close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Dr. Massey?
Thank you. I would move the Farmington Hills City Council hereby approves the attached resolution to vacate a public alley along 30250 Grand River Avenue and adjacent to the north lot line of lots 1 through 13 in the BH Works Aviation Subdivision in Section 35, subject to a full width utility easement being retained over the vacated area.
Is there?
Support, support Jackie.
It's been moved by Dr. Massey, supported and seconded by Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Jackie Boloware. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Noel?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Boloware?
Yes.
Strick Faden?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Okay, that passes unanimously. Now on to new business. Number six, consideration of approval of appointments to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and Historical District Commission. Don't all rush in to make a motion here now.
Yes. This is, I make a motion. And we approve the following appointments as of, at our, today's meeting. The first for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority is Gary Meckchen. Unexpired term ending February 1st, 2023. And City Manager Meckchen will fill the unexpired term of former City Manager Boyer, who retired in October 2020. This position has always been served by the City Manager. And the second appointment is to the Historic District Commission. And that's Alexander Thompson for a three-year length of, of three-year term ending February 1st, 2024. And Mr. Thompson, or Thompson, will fill the vacancy created by William White, who did not wish to be reappointed in February 2021 due to other responsibilities. So he's attached his resume to the, to the, yeah, so.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Boloware, seconded by Councilmember Noel. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Bridges?
Yes.
Boloware?
Yes.
Strick Faden?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes. And now we will move on to item number seven. Consideration of Approval of Consent Judgments for Consumers Energy Company versus the City of Farmington Hills at all CMR 23-21-27. Mr. Joppik?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor Barnett. These are two cases that were filed by Consumers Energy. They're condemnation cases where Consumers Energy is condemning areas for a new gas line through parts of the city. In these particular two cases, the owners of the private property were contesting the good faith offers of compensation made by Consumers Energy. And so Consumers Energy brought these cases. Now, as part of the state laws that apply to condemnation in Michigan. Now, as part of the state laws that apply to condemnation, uh, in Michigan, uh, consumers was required to name, uh, as parties to the case, a number of other, um, entities that have interests in the property, um, anything from, uh, uh, private, uh, easements to public easements such as ours for our public utilities, run across that property and require us and a, a long list of other defendants to be named, uh, electrical companies, the county and so on and so forth. Are all in this litigation just as a matter of, uh, statutory requirements. Um, and, uh, consumers needs to address any issues we have, um, uh, in connection with it. We actually tried to work this out with consumers. They contacted us ahead of time and we were trying to work it out, uh, without the necessity of having to be named in the litigation. But, uh, they, for various timing reasons, decided they needed to get the lawsuit filed, both of these lawsuits filed. Uh, and, uh, so they named us with the understanding that we'd finish up those discussions, um, as I've been reporting, uh, previously to you. So I hope, uh, council has a good idea of what's been going on. I'm really just giving this information for the public. Um, it really isn't a contentious case at this point anyway. Uh, and we have come to agreement under these consent judgments for terms that basically, you know, uh, it does allow consumers to, uh, proceed, assuming they get the consent or, or court order, allowing them to do with respect to the private property owners' interests. Uh, we would be out of the case however, uh, in terms of having our concerns addressed relative to our, uh, the city's public utility, uh, infrastructure that's underground in this property as well. And, uh, so we have included provisions in the draft consent judgment that have been negotiated to make sure that they don't interfere with our infrastructure, damage it in any way. If they do cause any problems, they're agreeing to take care of it. It also references our franchise agreement with them and, uh, just takes care of all the interests I've worked with. Uh, um, Karen Mandora on this, uh, very closely. We worked on this along with Beth Sorrelli from my office. Uh, all teamed together to come up with, uh, what we feel is a good resolution to both of these matters that protects the city's interests. Do you have any questions regarding any of the terms? Be happy to answer them for you. Um, but I think that is, um, the completion of my summary.
Does anybody have any questions of the city attorney?
There's a quick comment, Mayor.
Yes.
Yes, uh, Mr. Joppik, uh, uh, con- contending, uh, approval of this, uh, judgment tonight. Uh, would that end any, our, our involvement in this matter going forward?
Yes, it would conclude our involvement in the case, both cases.
Thank you, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Is there a motion? Dr. Massey?
On mute.
And I was so fast at getting that done, too. You have to keep, thank you. I would move the city council, Farmington Hills hereby approves and authorizes the city attorney to sign the consent judgments in the case of Consumers Energy versus Broadway Plaza Acquisitions LLC at all and Consumers Energy versus Quadrangle Investments LLC at all. Oakland County Circuit, uh, case numbers, two thousand twenty dash one eight five zero seven one dash CC and twenty twenty dash one eight five zero six three dash CC.
Is there a second? Ms. Newland. Okay, it's been moved by, uh, Dr. Massey, seconded by Ms. Newland. Um, this is a roll call vote.
Council members Boloware?
Yes.
Strick Faden?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Okay, and that brings us now to item number eight. Um, a recommended adoption of a resolution continuing and extending the declaration of a local state of emergency. Uh, the, um, COVID rate has jumped up over eighty percent in the state of Michigan this week. And, um, it's, it's very problematic. We still need, need people to wear their masks and to social distance. And even while we're in the middle of getting injections to as many people vaccines as possible, um, we are seeing some new strains of variants coming into the state. And in light of that fact, um, I would like to extend the resolution, uh, for the next three months. And at that point, um, we can revisit it or if we need to, um, rescind it, we can do that at any time. Mr. Jackson, do you want to weigh in on this?
Uh, Mayor, I think you did a very good job. I think, um, you know, we continue to social distance within city hall, within our city buildings. Um, you know, meetings are, are still, uh, very much discouraged if we can handle things remotely. And, um, uh, there's also, uh, some legislation afoot right now at the state level. I'm sure you're all aware of that as well, um, that may or may not gain traction, but, um, I think we'll wait to see what happens there, so.
In addition, by having a state of emergency in effect, um, we also can obtain, um, a portion of grants that are issued to, uh, on an emergency basis. So, um, that's the other reason why I would like to keep this up and running and have our EOC, Emergency Operating Center, um, remain in effect in case we see a massive spike in the Farmington Hills area. So, um, with that, is there a motion to extend the resolution of the declaration of local state of emergency?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I would move that we extend that, uh, the local emergency. Um, there's no, uh, timestamp, I know date certain, it's just open in until we feel necessary that we could reverse it, right? It's basically our judgment regarding that.
I think we have a, a, a date on it.
Yeah, there is an end date of June thirtieth.
Okay.
Right.
I would move that the, the city council adopt a resolution continuing to extend the declaration of a local, of a local state of emergency.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Bridges. Is there a second? Uh, council member Newland. Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Council members Strick Faden?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Boloware?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes, thank you all very much. Um, I, this is important to the city. So I appreciate, uh, your consideration of it. Uh, next on the agenda is entering into a closed session for the purposes of, um, consideration of approval to enter into a closed session to discuss pending litigation regarding Charles Blackwell versus the city of Farmington Hills. Please note for the public that the council may return to open session immediately following the closed session, which we will do to, um, and, and at least, um, adjourn the meeting, um, if not something more. So, um, do we need a roll call to go into executive session?
Yes, we need a motion made, um, stating the reason why we're going in, just as you have read, and then a roll call vote.
Okay, Dr. Massey, have your hand up?
Yes, I would make a motion that we move into a closed session to discuss the pending litigation as read by the mayor.
Or it's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by council member Noel. Uh, this is a roll call vote.
Council members Newland?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Boloware?
Yes.
Strick Faden?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes, so we will now go into closed session. Um, Carly, you'll let us know when we're in closed session?
If, if you can just give me a couple of minutes, I'll take us in there.
Okay. Um, welcome back, city of Farmington Hills Council, uh, open session meeting for March twenty-second, two thousand eleven, uh, two thousand twenty-one. Boy, I almost lost ten years there. Um, is back underway and we welcome you all back. Uh, we should be up and running on Zoom and YouTube at this point. Um, so I will now, uh, open this up for, um, an, uh, an item brought to us by our city attorney. So I will, um, call on our city attorney. You're on mute.
Yeah, so if we could, if we could wait a moment or two to allow anybody who is on YouTube an opportunity to sign back in, I think that would be advisable.
Okay, we will wait, um.
I, I do know there's at least one individual who's interested.
So should we wait four minutes, three minutes?
Uh, let's just wait, uh, a couple of minutes and see if at least he signs back in. I think we've let him know that it's, um, he was inquiring about it and I think we've let him know that he can sign back in.
Okay. So we shall enjoy the quiet for a minute or two.
Isn't this a lot like waiting in an elevator?
Uh, yeah, but there's no muzak playing.
I'm trying to read my fish. I've got fish.
I hear your bubbles.
I see here my bubbles. Okay, okay, okay. So here, 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 here are my fish.
Looks nice.
So.
Very nice, very nice, Mary, Mary, Mary Newland.
That, that is my whole, that's my indoor aquarium. So they usually go out in the pond, uh, in the summertime. So right now they're in a hundred and fifty gallon hotel in the house right now for the winter.
Are those, those, uh, like koi fish?
Yes, uh, some of them are, as you can see, are probably, oh, oh, they're a couple of feet. They're at least, the smallest one's probably eight feet, eight inches long. Some of them are, some of them are up to about a fo- foot and a half or more.
You got any bluegill in there?
No bluegill.
Any Asian carp lurking around?
Well, they are, they are technically carp, so yeah.
I, I, I know. Don't, don't flush them down the toilet.
Oh, no, no, no. I've got, I've got koi that, uh, a lot of people would pay me money for a couple of them, but we've had for years. So they're like, you know, parts of the family.
Mayor Barnett, it appears that, um, we do have one attendee in right now. If you want, I didn't know if you want to give a few more minutes or just proceed?
We can proceed at this point. Okay, so Mr. Joppik? You are on mute.
Thank you, Mary, Mayor Barnett. We've had an opportunity to, uh, discuss this matter in closed session. Uh, and, uh, at this point, um, I think if council is prepared, uh, we can make a motion or council could make a motion, uh, regarding whether or not to proceed in the manner recommended uh, by our office with respect to this particular lawsuit.
Okay, uh, does somebody want to make a motion?
Mayor?
Okay, Ms. Noel?
Sure. I will, um, make a motion to authorize the city attorney to proceed in the manner recommended by the city attorney in closed session in the case of Blackwell versus Farmington Hills.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Noel, seconded by Mr. Strick Faden. Um, this will be a roll call vote. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, okay, this is a roll call vote.
Council members Massey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Boloware?
Yes.
Strick Faden?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
And Mayor, uh, Mayor Barnett?
Yes, and this brings us to the close of the regularly scheduled meeting for the city of Farmington Hills for March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. Um, we now need to have a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by
Second.
Mr. Strick Faden, um, to adjourn. This is a roll call vote.
Council members Noel?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Boloware?
Yes.
Strick Faden?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes, so this brings us to the end of our meeting for tonight. We will be back, uh, the second Monday in April. Um, so have a, a happy, healthy holiday this year, um, no matter what you celebrate. And, um, we will reconvene after Easter and Passover. Um, I believe it'll be during Ramadan. Um, not quite sure. Um, but for all of those of you in the community, stay safe, wear your mask, practice hand hygiene and, uh, use your moisturizer where necessary. And, uh, we will be back. Uh, this officially closes the meeting for tonight. Good night, Farmington Hills.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night.